I'm gonna call the order. This meeting of the Nottingham Planning Board is Wednesday, September 10th, 2025 at 6:30. First off, I'd like to, does anybody wanna lead a pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, to call this meeting to order, I'll have people introduce themselves. I'll start at this end of the table tonight.
I'm Nick Principato, I'm the land use coordinator.
Skip Severance, alternate.
John Decker, select board rep.
Chris Evans.
Drew Stevens, vice chair.
Dirk Rotten, vice chair.
Glenn Griswold.
Danny Arsenal.
Adam Ryan.
Blair Hady, SRPC.
We have just a few things on the agenda. We do not have any public hearings tonight, so we do have some other things we'll do. Tonight, let's start off with approval of the minutes from July 23rd and August 27th. The minutes are in the binders. If you haven't read them, then take a quick review and take a look if you have any questions. Bring them up now and we'll note them, so then we can get these minutes approved. That's sufficient amount of time.
I have one correction.
Yup.
One correction from me. Line 53, I think it should be...
What date?
Sorry, this is the July 23rd minutes. Line 53, it's not the Conservation Commission that's applying for grants for that parcel, it's CELT. So changing that to say Mr. Stevens clarified that CELT is also applying for grants, I think would be more accurate.
Okay.
That's it from me.
Anybody else?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of July 23rd, 2025, as amended.
Second that motion. All those in favor, engage eye. Aye. Opposed?
Can't vote.
We won't count it. You can raise your hand, but we won't count it. And August 27th minutes? Alright, any motions for the minutes?
Motion to approve August 27 minutes.
Second that.
Motion is second. Those in favor, engage eye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Adam Ryan will abstain due to my absence and I have not watched their video. Abstain.
So prior to the select board updates and committee member updates and staff member, I acknowledge that there's a public previous applicant here in the audience. We, the planning board needs to sign my Lars for that applicant. So I would like to obligate the applicant that's here and have those signed so that they can get on their way. Anybody opposed to doing that?
No. Did, I have a question though. Blair, what became of that road easement?
It's been executed.
Executed and done, happy. Okay, I don't think we saw that, but...
We did.
It is. Thank you, sir.
Alright. Let's just take a couple minutes and get this lined up. You don't need a handful, but you're all welcome to say.
No, no, not, but I think technically only the chair needs to.
It's good to have a few on.
Weird to not be signing it down.
Yeah, cuz this is an unused for the Mylar.
We'll get Skip's autograph tonight.
I insist.
He's refused.
I don't know what I'm supposed to do. Nephew, sir.
Yeah, I counted 19, and this one looks bigger, so I think that's a duplex.
Yeah, they said the one up front.
Sorry, I don't know.
But it's okay, from the early 200s.
Yeah.
Different counting method.
Maybe 200s. Not sure who's around this.
Yeah, you guys gotta use a special pen. Oh, yeah, look, my mother's tone.
Just let it go. Several times, I might go. She probably doesn't know you stopped.
I think you have to sign that too.
I think I did. Or at least one copy I did.
Bunch of them, sir. Mr. Bass said it's your responsibility to get them recorded and an acknowledgement or proof of recording needs to come back to the planning board.
Numbers back to you tomorrow, is my goal.
Very good.
Then Avatar will have a reference to know that it's now channel three.
Oh, shit.
Then Dale can do, will have an actionable items to do, go from there.
Eric, do you have the other version of that?
I want the paper ones, just for our record.
Yes, I just brought them up.
Mylar is good, yeah. And then just take the Mylar with you, I'll keep the paper ones.
I might be able to share it on the screen.
I do have it. Share to that screen via that iPad now, so we could try that. It's right big across, let's try it.
I think this is important here.
Yeah, we'll bring that up on the screen. It's on the agenda.
Sounds good.
We'll get to that item.
Yeah.
We have the technology.
Yeah, it's not on the agenda for this, this meeting, is it? Dropped off again.
I think it is.
It's a squat like that. Yeah. Yes.
Oh, you're looking at that in conjunction with the...
Yes. Yep, that's...
Alright, on the same page now. We're talking strictly about the DOT.
Nope.
How it relates.
So should we have a public section on here, on the agenda at some? I mean, we kinda obviously just did that.
Yeah, there should be.
You're in trouble.
Well, yeah?
Yeah.
So after the... We'll fix it for direction.
Yeah, the last minutes, the last agenda.
Good job, Kevin, by the way. Not unrolling, but doing that. Good job.
Good job on rolling, too.
Never really needs a little help.
I appreciate that. I appreciate that. Thank you, gentlemen.
You're welcome. Thank you for your patience, we'll stick 'em through it.
You're giddy-pigging on this one. Blazing a new path.
What's that, what's that?
And thank you for blazing a new path and trying to straighten out some of our road business like that.
Let's just pounce on that topic a little bit. We did a road with extension thing that... And road and all that, so I hope you do the rest of the road. Hey, just don't stop here. You stop here, it's just not good, so, you know, there's other pieces that you would come back to me on, and there's a bunch of other pieces you'd come back to other folks on.
Yeah.
If you really wanna do it, you did it for me, so you really wanna do it, you've already proved it, so continue. You know? If there's pushback, there's pushback, or whatever, you gotta figure that out, but...
Thank you for your comment, we'll take it into consideration.
Yeah.
What, I was being, I was joking, really. It is a good thing that we have a direction now on how to do that and that future applications would, you know, have a... We, does the board have a way to implement it, so it's a good path.
Are you gonna wait for future applications, or are you gonna be proactive and go for it?
That's not on us to be proactive, right? We can't be proactive here, we have to hear cases that come before us, so we can't really make things happen at this board. I mean, we try to with the select board, but... It's the select board that has to do it.
And solicit all the other landowners on the road to do the same thing that I did, which was just to allow you to go beyond 25 feet and do what you needed to do, why wouldn't you solicit that? Or is that outside of your premium?
Well, I think, I think it's outside of our responsibilities, but I think that it also would imply that there would be monetary outlay by somebody to do the same thing.
And it would be...
Is that more a select board?
If you, I would say that if you petition the select board to move forward with that, they have the ability to be more proactive, though, you know, might be...
I'm not sure how much we can do. I mean, part of it is because of the subdivision here, you know, may, brought it forward. You know, cuz the subdivision has rules that it's supposed to impact the road with and things like that, where if somebody's lot is not being divided, you know, it's been accepted that way. So, but yes, I think there's a different issue that you're, you're talking about, Kevin, where you're talking about the, basically the rights and ability to access the private property to do that maintenance. And that's, I think we could probably at least investigate it and see what we can, you know, that's all we can do, at least to start is investigate it.
Only makes sense. Be how you have this little piece out of this whole circle and all the way back to the railroad, it doesn't make sense for you not to pursue the rest of it. And then, because, you know, a landowner can say yes, a landlord can say no, and then you stop there. But if it's okay, do it. So this is my...
Hear you.
I don't wanna even say no more, because this is how, to be proactive, to get the whole thing established as a norm, is up to you and the board of select. It's hard.
There may be some cases where, you know, again, when your subdivision invoke the authority of whatever of the jurisdiction of the planning board, but if someone's building a house, they, I mean, where do you, we go to each house and say, hey, we want you to give away some of your, front of your rights or something?
It's not giving away. Wasn't really a giveaway, it was on demand, as needed, so it's not a big ask from a landowner perspective, so it's okay.
But we should perhaps...
I will relinquish the floor on that.
No, we should perhaps consider, you know, when, whether it's a subdivision regulations or something, that, you know, if there's a development on a road like this, that, you know, we, you know, have a discussion or something. Maybe that's added into the subdivision regs, maybe zoning regs, but there's a bunch of these roads.
It already is, isn't it?
Yeah.
It's already there.
So it's already there, so...
The problem here was, that's what turned up.
To be proactive on what exists now, that's what is not being done now. In other words, do the rest of the whole road, or at least ask the landowners if they wanted it. You can, yes, and yes, 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 and no, and yes, yes, yes. Implement it. You did that, it's okay. Can I open the next floor?
Yes, please.
Mr. Dan?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bass.
Thank you, Rob.
Alright, I do wanna point out that that was our public comment session. It just was omitted from the agenda, so we'll get that corrected on the agenda for next time. That we'll have public hearings after the minutes, we'll have public input, and then we'll have the select board committee, staff, board member updates. So that's where we're gonna go now, is before we hit the other business, which we have a couple items. Let's just go around and see if there's any updates from various committees and staff. So I'll start with Nick again.
I got three quick things, I'll do public comment on the next agenda, heard that. The first one is for when you guys like to get your information for plans and stuff like that, for applicants, you'd like them mailed to you, correct? That's, that's what I do for the ZVA, is that, that's standard practice for here?
It has been.
It has been.
You guys be opposed to changing that?
Cuz a lot of that information will appear in your binder again, I'll send it all to you electronically, and we're not wasting money on sending stuff through the mail. And if you want a hard copy of it, I could get it all ready for you beforehand here, you could stop by the office to pick it up.
So that, we shouldn't be wasting money on the mail because it should be billed back to the applicant.
Okay.
We did change that in the last year, the fees, so that that reflected that, you're right. So that shouldn't be a hit on us.
Right, which, so that's really important, that we did that. And I think it depends on what it is, that we're, because what the case is, we wanna be able to study up on it, and sometimes you can't see it all.
It's, some of them are 40 pages long, and, you know, going through on your phone or your computer screen is...
So you guys prefer the mail version?
I prefer both, you know, distributing it via mail so that I can mark up hard copies of a big subdivision plan, and then I also like the digital copies so that I can quickly search through them for this and that, and their, you know, uses for both. But unfortunately, there are advantages to paper that make me still want it for certain reasons, as much as I wanna get away from it entirely.
And the other thing with paper copies is, those can't be changed, you know? Once you have them, that's the record, you know?
So my next question for that is when we have, we haven't had a plan come through yet for you guys. When we do, do you want, if I mail all this information to you, all the stuff, do you want me to put stuff in your binder for it, or if, cuz you already have a copy, you bring that with you, and then I'm not making doubles of a lot of different things?
We should be able to bring it with us, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Maybe leave an extra copy in case somebody forgets one or something.
Like, like Chris.
I have forgotten, no. And there's one, I never got a copy of it in the mail, so...
That's fine.
Often the applicant will have extras too, so that, you know, between bringing our own and the applicant probably having extras when they come before us, I think it's okay not to put them in.
I can't remember if we, how many we have, but it's like 15 copies that is required to be submitted. So there's 15 paper copies that, if they're not distributed, then they're sent somewhere. So if we can put them to good use and the mailing's covered, then, sure.
Perfect.
I was gonna say, Alana used to post all, and I don't, you know, presume you might do that too, but she used to post all of the applications and all the process on the website, so in a pinch, if you didn't get the mail and you needed to jump on and look, it was easy to find. And I think that's good for everybody in the whole town, anybody in the town could look at that and say, what's going on over on the property next to me, and see all the documents, and very helpful, I thought. Not all towns do that.
Good to know, I'll make sure to keep doing that. My second thing is for these meetings, you guys have Blair coming to all of them. Would you like me to keep coming to these? Yes?
For the next few, yeah. I think it'd be helpful if you did come. You know, maybe there's some that we can, that you don't need to, but it would be helpful at the beginning to have you come in and then help us a little bit.
I'm happy to, I just wanted to ask. And my third thing is, I got an email about someone who's looking to put in a telecommunications tower somewhere, and they wanted to know the process to do that. We do have a communication overlay district, but it doesn't set any bounds, and I was wondering if you guys knew the process for that, before I dig deeper into it tomorrow.
We had a communications tower come in, I'm gonna have to figure out the year, but it was, it was an application process, I'll try and dig up what we did for that. We went all the way through site review, we reviewed, we had a site visit, I don't know who else was, was there at that, but I remember going to the site, and it didn't end up being fully developed.
Okay. Did they have to go to the zoning board first to get a variance for a special use?
I don't remember.
I don't remember.
No worries, I'll look into it more, but I just wanted to ask first, see if anyone knew.
Usually site plan application was submitted.
Do we, can we identify where there are a few cell phone towers, that maybe you could go backwards and look at those files and kinda see what...
I'm in the process of doing that right now.
Okay, that's one that we, we saw before the board.
And that one didn't get built?
That wasn't built.
So, okay. And I know there's one on French Road.
Yeah, then nobody can find it, show the...
There's three.
Yeah, there's two on the other side of Route 4, and then there's the...
Yeah, and the north side of Route 4, just kinda up behind the...
I don't have service down there.
Manfakor, like, in the woods.
I'd be happy to put it in my backyard, cuz I don't have service at my house.
Three eyeballs in there.
It says SOS.
Well, that's all I got, so...
Thank you, thank you. Skip?
The only thing I would have is CIP, and we really haven't done a whole lot of that yet. We've got a meeting, we're gonna have another meeting here coming up.
Yeah, we haven't met since last time.
We haven't met since the last meeting.
Assist a little of this, yes. Alright. We did, so select board did agree to purchase a used F-550 to replace the one that was totaled a few weeks ago. And other than that, the beach is officially closed for the season, which was on, at 7 o'clock on...
I get nothing, or a change.
I don't think there's anything Conservation Commission-wise, that conservation property that is in process over the north part of Potuckway, still moving along. You know, there are other funding sources that are needed to make that happen, and that process is still, still in play. So that's really all that's going on with Conservation Commission right, right now. I don't think I have anything else.
I can provide a little bit of update on the Master Plan Subcommittee. Don't remember the date, but just a week and a half ago, we met. Went through the Natural Resources workshop that we're thinking of doing. We come up with a date, and that date's October. Anyone else wanna help me on that?
The workshop is November 8th.
Oh, we pushed it into November.
The workshop itself, yeah.
Workshop is November 8th, alright.
Saturday, November 8th, from 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m., and it's a housing natural resources workshop combo.
Well, that's, that's all I have for the Master Plan Subcommittee.
Not much to report. There is a SRCP field trip coming up, where we're going to be going over to UNH to talk with land use planning students and personnel and things like that. I'll let you know how it goes.
You're all good. It's a housing conversation with the students over there. Conversation about housing, the students.
Yeah? No updates?
Skip pretty much covered all the CIP stuff last meeting, I got nothing on, nothing to further.
So I was gonna talk a little bit about, and I wanted to, before I forget, the 18th, so a week from tomorrow?
So that is that Tuesday, that's the one that conflicts with the ZVA meeting. What's that?
Are you talking about the Master Plan Subcommittee meeting that's on Tuesday?
No.
Oh, okay.
No, I'm talking about, yeah, so, yeah, a week from tomorrow is a, the monthly webinar that the state BES does, Business Economic Affairs, it's the closest thing that the state has to a planning office. This one is gonna be about, a lot of the things we're gonna talk about again tonight, but there is more to come. Changes to planning, zoning, and building code laws, so this is the stuff that the state has done. I, I, we'll continue to tell you guys about things like this to, so you can stay informed, stay up on the regulation changes that, you know, are going to directly impact the town's zoning ordinance, the subdivision regulations. It does affect some of the building code stuff, it would be good for you all to know, but yeah, it's, it's been substantial. So stay, stay intuited on that. So this one, they're normally an hour, this one's gonna be an hour and a half, cuz they know they have so much to go over. So this one, they're normally an hour, this one's gonna be an hour and a half, cause they know they have so much to go over. Um so that's a week from uh tomorrow. Talking about the one I was brought up, uh like Glenn, uh is. So this is part of a bigger project, um and it's a, a bigger housing project that we're doing in conjunction with. Uh Southern Maine's Regional Planning Commission, and it has to do uh with um a DOD grant. Uh to help the naval shipyard in uh in Kinney. You know, identify ways that they can increase housing availability and reduce housing costs for the. Uh you know, sort of the transient population of military people that come through that area. Um so we got pulled into it, uh we've been doing our part for our area, they're doing their part for their area. We had a, an event back in uh June, it was an online webinar, that was the one. Um you know, how to balance housing growth with natural resource protection. This one, uh we wanted to find a way to do two things, one incorporate the commissioners, the SRPC commissioners. Field trip that they do every quarter. And we also wanted to bring the students into this, um you know, we're, at SRPC, we're fortunate to have Durham and UNH part of our region. And, you know, we wanna maintain that relationship and 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 um continue to work with the students. So uh this is a project that I'm running, and you know, what we're gonna do is we've had, we've got four or five commissioners. That are gonna give a three to five minute speech, it's not a presentation, it's a quick speech on a recent change to their town's. Zoning or subdivision regulations that would have an impact on reducing housing costs. Either by, you know, making a, by streamlining, streamline permitting, by um increasing density. Or uh by um, you know, allowing a different type of housing that had not really been allowed or encouraged. Or was even financially feasible to make happen. So make a quick presentation on something like that, have a few people do it, and then do a, a Q and A uh with the students and the presenters. And then the students are gonna engage in their own conversation um around housing. Um talking about the issues that uh im- you know. How does housing affordability impact young people? Because they don't have the wherewithal to 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 know about zoning changes, you know, they're just not as experienced, so getting into something tactical wasn't really gonna do. So we decided to make it sort of high level, um uh make it more personal, uh things that they could speak to and be comfortable about. So there, they have a planning club, their four executive board members are gonna lead the conversation, they're students. But they're gonna lead the conversation uh with students on, on that topic, uh that's tentatively what it's set for. So this is gonna go from uh four to five thirty on September twenty fifth. They'll be on campus Barton Hall. We've been sending out our first email blast today, I presume that's how you got it, yeah. Um so if you haven't seen it, may make its way to you, if you haven't got it, um and it doesn't seem like anybody has. I will just forward it on to you, and then you can share it. So it is, it is open to the wider public. And um, yeah, I think it's just a good opportunity to, to work with the students. The, and they're gonna make it available to their student body, but it'll be mostly the planning and development, you know, people, but it's housing. That affects everybody, so you know, who knows, maybe a lot of kids, a lot of students wanna come and, and hear what's being said, how it's being talked about. But um, yeah, that's the plan from now, so four to five thirty on September twenty fifth. That's it for me.
Okay, right, I have a question, Blair? Yeah, you're working with a whole bunch of towns and you just cited um reducing housing costs, streamlining the process density and housing types. What are some other towns that you've seen done that's been successful? That we should maybe know about or try to follow or look at?
Yeah, I mean, you know, there's a lot of different communities that have taken different approaches. A lot of the bigger changes we're seeing are in the more urbanized areas. And um, you know, there's, there's, there's a lot of reluctance in the smaller communities to, to, to do much. So finding ways to, to allow for um uh communities to embrace. Different types of housing, I think is, and uh that, that, that'll come with incremental change. And, you know, I, I don't think there's any sort of uh one size fits all solution. But um, you know, thinking about how. You know, I guess thinking, I think about it from a builder's perspective, is what are the inputs, what are the costs to build a house? And, you know, what can the town do to address that? I mean, is it, is it, you know, big setbacks, is it big uh development areas? Is it frontages, is it, is like, is it a dimensional thing, or is it a density thing? Like, okay, let's say you stay at two acres, two hundred feet of frontage, but can someone build more on it? Can they build a duplex, can they build a three or four unit structure? If you want things more spread out, but you're allowing people to build more densely on those units. You know, there's different ways of doing it, I, what I find through these, the processes that we're going through right now is by listening to people. Finding out what the concerns are and then trying to address the concerns. Some people just kinda come at it and say, no density, no new development, no new nothing. That person's hard to work with, cause you don't really know what the, what the concern is, but through these exercises, through the outreach, that's when you kind of. You're kind of pushing people a little bit more to sort of open up and talk more specifically about what their concerns are. And then are those concerns something that can be addressed um in an incremental fashion? Nobody's proposing overnight towns become Summersworth, Rochester, whatever. But I think just looking at what are the issues and can they be addressed? If they can't, then you know, they can't, but you know, my job's pretty limited, I, you know, I've, I've gotta advocate. Because it's part of what I'm supposed to do, of, of bringing ideas and concepts to people's attention. But not push it to the point of, of kind of going against the grain of the client, the town, right? So it, you know, I was supposed to bring things and I was supposed to make points, and if someone's saying something that's factually incorrect. You know, make that correction, but not be such a, a hard advocate for something, so.
So if I can um jump in, uh kind of like what you were talking about, Chris, just as a couple of examples. So Dover, for example, has recently uh reduced setbacks. Um in most of their zones, so that you can build within about ten feet of the property line in certain areas. And they also allow uh what are called pork chop or backlot subdivisions, where they have narrow frontage. You know, of fifty feet or whatever, that necks out, and then they have a larger area in back that they can build. Other places like uh Lebanon, Maine, they allow for multifamily developments. In single family areas, but allow for reduced area and frontage requirements. So for example, if you wanna build a duplex, you can do that on the two acres, two hundred feet of frontage.
How big is Lebanon just?
Um Lebanon's about the same size as Nottingham.
Okay, thank you.
And one of the things that they allow is that for each dwelling beyond those two. It's only half an acre and another, I think it's fifty feet of frontage. So you can end up making a denser uh building area. While still keeping the same setbacks and um, you know, overall density. So I, just two different approaches to how uh, you know, that sort of housing can. Move forward without really changing the character of the town. Um and like I said, Lebanon is pretty similar to Nottingham in that they've got. Uh Route two oh two, which is Route four, going right through the middle of town. Whereas we have it, you know, just along our northern edge, but I, otherwise it's fairly similar.
Alright, can we get into our agenda? I mean, the other business? We've got, first thing is in a butter letter, uh for eight Nottingham Road map. Thirty-four, lot thirty-three. This is a. Application in Northwood, and that applicant is seeking a design review application. In Northwood for a cluster subdivision of forty acres, twenty single family units and one duplex. The hearing is September eleventh, uh tomorrow night at six thirty in Northwood Town Hall. Uh we have received a. Application letter that went to. Northwood. And did this come through to us from the applicant or just from the planning board? In Nottingham, in Northwood?
The planning board is from Northwood, I believe.
So because the town is so close, or is, is part of the project, we're listed as in a butter. This isn't through the DRI process, we're pulled in, we are actually in a butter at the, at the outset. Because of very narrow strip of land on what is basically the top side of the, of the map or the, the plan. I don't know if that's north, I presume that's north, but it's the top side. Yeah, so just whatever the top, the top side of the thing is.
Page north.
Page, page north, thank you, there we come, that's a good industry term I haven't heard before, yes, it is page north. Um and 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 that includes parts, so we are, the town is brought in as a butter as opposed to a DRI where you're pulled in. Because of declaration of, of being a development of regional impact. So to be clear, this has not been voted on as a DRI. It's, 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 it's very possible that it will be, given the size of Northwood and the size of this development. But um uh for now, you're, the, the town is in a butter, by virtue of having land in it.
So we have no, uh the, the planning board right now does not have a requirement for any action uh or response. But we are, we, there is potential, if you want to have a response, we can talk about sending a response.
Correct, yeah, you're never obligated, you have the right.
Blair, just a quick question. Given that the property exists in both towns. Shouldn't they also be coming before us when they're doing their whole project?
My understanding is that since none of the activity is taking place in town, there would be no jurisdiction.
All of the units are in.
Even though it's.
The, the town line actually makes a subdivision line?
It does, but I'm just wondering about the um, you know. Because of the fact that both properties are uh contiguous. That, you know, do we have any sort of say in what happens on the other side of the town line? Is basically what I'm getting at.
On our side, yeah.
On our side, yes, on their side, no.
The, in the two hundreds, they came in with an application of the Gatchel.
Long ago.
Probably two thousands, coincidentally. I don't know, that's a good question.
It's not our responsibility, but it is a good question.
What was that, Adam?
I said, how does our town tax a situation like that?
It, it's, it has a tax map.
Yeah.
And it's taxed, it's unused land, so this is five acres, it's a strip. Map sixteen, lot four. But. When they came in with that application, they were utilizing both Nottingham land and Northwood land to put in a subdivision. And coincidentally, it was around the same time as the DOT doing the intersection of one fifty-two and Route four back then. I don't know what the link is, I don't know what, it just seems confusing to me, but anyway, they're doing it again at this point in time. It appears, at least from the verbiage, that they realized the town line complicated that big time back then. And it, and it was very complicated, um and so now they're doing it without using Nottingham land. It appears that they've recognized that the town line is an important factor here. So I don't, I don't know what types of things we could say that would address that, but I suppose. You know, there shouldn't be any dumping on Nottingham land, there shouldn't be any changes in use on Nottingham land. Nottingham land can't be used for. Whatever the requirements are that exist with the cluster subdivision. Setbacks, that kind of stuff, not, can't use Nottingham to su- to satisfy Northwood setback. Those are kind of the things that I saw, but.
Yeah, I, I think we would have uh certainly the ability if there's traffic impacts to Nottingham, other impacts that might. You know, we would see.
It's a state, a state road though.
It is, it's a state road, so they'll, they will have to coordinate with DOT. And when we started, you know, I started pulling up the old, not the old, but the proposed DOT. Plan for that intersection, both as a signalized intersection and as a roundabout. I started, you know, looking at where it's gonna connect and all of that, um you know, it's not our responsibility as the planning board to. Work out those details either.
No.
So they'll have to go to the state and get a permit to access the road, which then we would hope that. Which they've been out for public meetings, um so there's somebody there that will know that they've got a plan to improve that and any impacts. You know, they would review those.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know how that works then, if these guys wanna do this right away, and they're using the present. Versus what that spur road becomes after the intersection. And then the subsequent uh intersection at that point in time, I think that is going to be in Nottingham. Right after whatever the intersection on Route four and one fifty-two becomes.
That's my concern as well, is that spur road being, I assume would become a Nottingham road.
Northwood actually, but a portion.
Well, which, no, there's part of it.
This here is North.
That would, right, but I don't think that's gonna, I think it's getting disconnected over here, right?
Here, yeah.
So. The new spur road would come from Nottingham.
This would be a good time to maybe put that.
I don't know if I wanna get into too much of that, though, I mean, I know.
So a- again, a lot of that has to do with whatever the DOT is gonna be doing. I, I guess, I look at it as, we just have bullets that may apply here, that kind of a thing.
Yeah.
Our concern, I guess.
I just don't wanna bring up things that are in this meeting that aren't any of our responsibility. Yes, please. You can call me Dirk.
The other thing only more than is Northwood, is that the cluster subdivision seems to be only for elderly housing. And workforce housing, neither one of those seemed odd to me, I guess.
Did you get, did we, did you cancel ours?
Still on here, system power is still on.
Oh, I think it switches, it should switch, do you have to hit the button to switch the uh?
Yeah, so there's a button here where you switch the HDMI one, the TV source.
No, and then that'll display, actually, that should display on the TV.
But that shouldn't have switched over there.
Right. Yeah, that's what I wasn't expecting that to switch.
No, that shouldn't have switched.
That should display with some TV potentially.
So there's, there's no signal check external input?
That part we can fix, this part we need to get back online here, so. We turn it, turn off, turn back on, then it goes right back to channel twenty-two, correct?
Yes. So don't turn it off.
Well, I, I think we already stopped broadcast.
Oh, okay.
So we have to turn it off, and then it will turn back on. It should, that's my understanding of it.
Alright, I didn't think so, but I think. All right, I didn't think so, but I think once you turn it off, it's off.
I will try to turn your TV source back on just to see it because there was no HDMI.
This is why I didn't want to pick this up.
That's why they want to let.
This is why I didn't want to put it on.
Did you want to kind of pull the TV out too?
I'm not going to touch that TV again.
I was a teenager. Skip, by the way, I'm, I'm going to be vacation out of the country.
They should come up TV on the correct input.
It's it.
It should be.
Better to.
Then they'll change it earlier.
Okay.
October twelfth or something.
Okay.
You don't have any plans, right?
We might need to then.
Okay. For the door for.
Yeah, I don't know. I didn't look at the meeting dates, but.
He's tagging you in.
For September.
Okay.
End of September.
Then just to make sure it's not a connection issue.
They should be bringing down there.
Yeah, I'll notify other people to.
Okay.
I can't authorize that.
Just turn blue, so that's definitely one of them.
Well, that, not authorized.
That has a color down there or?
It's not prompting you on your computer to like share the screen or anything like that?
Unfortunately, it doesn't go fast either.
I was told not to, you can't move the TV around today because the mount is funky. I, I, that's.
Oh, yeah, it fell forward the last time we were using it.
I think it's tilted that way because of us last time.
I didn't say that, but. My concern now is that we're not live anymore.
I would agree. We probably aren't since we're seeing that up there.
Right, that's all I've been told.
Had to be on my realm of knowledge in the system.
There's a light on back here. Says it's got the power on.
Seems like it should just plain turn it on again.
Well, we did something.
Look forward to talking about something.
Oh, I got my lesson. This just didn't happen when we did it. Because the system power is on, so we should be.
Hey, we technically can't talk without them recording, right? Honestly, yeah, we're technically.
Yeah, we can. Yeah, we can. We take minutes.
Just see if it goes.
The TV and the broadcast source is the camera.
Right.
So it should be broadcasting there, but it's not showing there.
We were positive that the TV over here is on.
Text tug.
Yeah, it's got to be. It should be.
Yeah.
It says HDMI one. That's the only thing that's plugged in.
Unless they're labeled differently on there than they are.
You could switch the HDMI two. But I think our bigger problem, instead of getting it on the TV, is that we might not be live anymore.
Yeah.
They're having fun watching us if we are. Flailing around.
It's not good to shut it off.
Right.
I mean, it says we're live.
Yeah.
Supposedly.
Dirk, Nick did pull out the old file in case you want to look at.
The drive in the source and the system power is on.
So it, it's really, it's kind of an interesting.
It's not coming.
Subdivision plan and all that, but this, this appears to avoid any Nottingham interference.
Yeah.
As long as it stays that way, I think it's good.
Except for the, the driveway entrance coming in there is crappy and site distance and.
Can somebody check?
I mean, I walked it. I was standing there. I parked.
Just texted.
Down the road there and I had a yellow safety vest and I did not.
No, it's not good. It's not.
Just not good at all. And, and that's people coming into our town, you know, that are arriving and visiting and living here and driving in and.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, going down. When the guy used to work on cars in that little
I wonder if it's this little.
You come around the corner and there's a guy pulling a busted.
So I already repositioned that side of it.
So yeah, I'm plugged, I'm plugged into the HDMI.
Do you want me to try and plug it in mine just so?
Yeah, didn't you work last time?
No, we used.
Blair did.
We used.
Blairs, yeah.
But we used it, we used this cable directly into the TV.
Yeah, that one is HDMI one. That one's HDMI two.
What is?
The cord's huge.
There's another cord?
There should be one behind you, I think. No?
No, this is my cord. There's no cord plugged in for HDMI two.
All right, I, I don't want to go crazy.
Yes, unfortunately, it's not working like we were hoping.
Yeah. Yeah, so what I can say is that the, the intersection.
Why someone telling you broadcast?
Doesn't come into the part of DOT's plan until it's like a section that's not being impacted, like it's not being improved. It'll be this small, the small connection that will be on, ultimately, the intersection will be in Nottingham.
Well, that intersection itself may be in Northwood, but it's going to basically dead end at, you know, basically right there.
And the other side will go to one fifty-two.
Yeah, so yeah, that side out of Route four will be closed.
It has to go through Nottingham.
So it'll be in, into Nottingham.
Yeah.
Additionally, on their plan here, it's showing that their access into the cul-de-sac is pretty much right on the town line.
Correct. Yeah, yeah. Their flare ends. I'm sure the connection is straight at the line.
Yeah.
The flare terminates at the town line.
Wonder what they're going to do with the town bound that's right there.
So I guess, is there a?
There is a town marker right there.
Yes.
On one fifty-two, not right there where they're doing. It, it's not, it's on.
It's there.
Well, it is right there. It is right there.
You should make sure we're on there or not, otherwise, I think I should start taking minutes in case.
Kelly doesn't.
The stream is cut off.
Yes.
Yeah, that's.
Yeah, good idea. Thank you. Good.
So is that going to go back on or?
I don't think so.
We tried and.
We're going to move on.
Okay, yeah, no, that's fine.
So let's, is is there a plan that we would? Is there a desire to send something to Northwood's planning board for tomorrow night's meeting?
What would that look like?
It would look like as in a butter, we have reviewed.
Proposal.
A proposal, the applicant in general, either, you know, we don't have to say whether they're a favor or not, but we could list some concerns. And it could be just a simple bullet point of, you know, here's the concerns that the planning board in town of Nottingham. You know, Blair, I'd have to ask you this, though. I mean, this, this, the town of Nottingham is the abutter.
Actually.
Has, has, have we been asked by select board to review this application on their behalf or anything like that?
I think it's directed by RSA to come to this board, not the select board.
Okay.
So I think in this instance, you're the top dog. I say that tongue in cheek. I'm just saying, like, I feel like, you know, this is the board that would have to be the one to speak on it.
Okay, so I guess what, what if any, does anybody have, say, a comment that we would like to include?
So I think the two major things that I would like to see addressed, one is the access, you know, how they're planning on dealing with whatever the DOT does with that intersection. And the other is that they're showing a crossing on a fairly good sized wetland right before the cul-de-sac, which crosses wetlands, then steep slopes to get up onto a fairly narrow ridge. And I just have concerns about the flow of that wetland down into the rest of town, pretty much.
And Glenn, that's not so much what their requirements are. That's just that.
Just from a.
To go someplace.
Exactly.
And it shows it at least here that the way it's going to go is towards Nottingham.
Indeed. Yep. Right, and we don't have any of the details of drainage or anything like that in this, this set of plans. You know, for all we know, they could be, you know, taking all of the storm water and putting it on our side, even though it's, it's New Hampshire DOT's road that they would have to be, you know, doing this in their ditches, but it also is, if it's a additional flow that we're not seeing today in the town of Nottingham, then we should know what that is and if there's any impacts because of that.
That area floods pretty bad, too. I live down that end.
And it's also part of the headwaters of the Little River right there, which DOT is looking at because it basically starts right on the other side of Route four right there.
It's like Little or North River?
Well, oh, actually.
Yeah.
It all depends where you're standing.
That's true.
Yeah, that's true.
The, if you're.
And both flow into Nottingham.
Yes.
Yes, yes. That, that big swamp area that they're not affecting, that tends to be the Little River area.
Any other, I think those are good.
I know.
Those are good two, two main primary comments.
Yeah.
I, I I think that the location, I was up there today and just on my way through and checked out the location and there's, the site distance is awful and your people coming off of Route four and down into Nottingham, these are our, our residents. And there's a road right there and pulling out across there where cars coming whipping down, it just, just seems dangerous for our people here in this town and hopefully I, I understand it's a state road, so they're going to have to deal with state requirements on site distance and there's also this whole subdivision going on or the, the redesign of this circle here or intersection. So I think that'll be good, but is this, if this was in our town, would we say this is premature because this whole state thing isn't even decided upon how it's going to work?
I think it's a, I think it's a good comment that we should add in this is that, you know, that that site distance prior to any improvements at this intersection, you know, could affect our.
Is scary at best.
Yeah, so the, the entrance to this, the entrance to this property could become our problem if this rotary happens.
Yes, because if they, they hit the cars pulling out, they're going to push them into Nottingham and that's going to tax our services without any taxable income. Just saying.
Well, and it, it might add to our town's rescue and fire and police
Right.
needs.
Right, well, and it's forty-two plowing, you know, that road, you know.
Yeah, plowing.
What happens with that little piece? That, you know, they're going to extend into Nottingham or that road, that road would be dead ended before that.
That'd still be the state road, right?
They'd still.
No.
That would be a DOT issue.
Yeah.
This, this.
The state, it's not going to give.
The state.
Do anything with that road.
Northwood says they're not going to maintain that road. It's a state road. The state's going to do it.
The spur too?
The spur, yeah. They didn't like that comment. The state didn't like the comment.
No, the state won't maintain that road.
No.
Their plow can't even turn in there. So bad.
Good, good point, yeah.
And we're, we shouldn't maintain it, that's for sure.
And is there a turnaround there if we're maintaining that on the end of that spur there? I don't know if anybody's looking at this plan, this picture.
Not a lot of room.
No, no. But again, this is, this is DOT's preliminary plans.
Right.
They haven't designed it.
Right.
Flushed it out. They haven't come back to the town and said this is advancing. So I think those are very valid issues for that when it comes time.
Yeah. Additional, yeah.
But for this.
But even right now, it's, it's a scary intersection.
Yeah, that's why they're doing something. I mean, that's why they're planning to do something.
No, I mean.
The Route four intersection is scary. I know.
Yeah, but, but.
That will be even scarier.
Right, with the spur really doesn't have to exist anymore. It just goes to one driveway.
It may get re.
It's actually.
It may get readjusted to just match up with this other subdivision.
The garage.
Okay, so we have these three. Are we, any other?
Nick has a question.
Yeah, for my purposes, could we just rehash those in plain terms for the email? I'll send them tomorrow.
Yeah, would you like me to draft you the language and then I'll?
That would work too.
Send it to you tomorrow?
That would work better.
Yeah, because I just would like to wordsmith this a little bit more and, but the primary ones are how we, how they plan to interface with the future New Hampshire DOT intersection improvements. The impacts to the natural resources, the wetland impacts, impacts the flooding because of the, both Little and North Rivers flow into Nottingham. And then the site distance on Route one fifty-two is scary at best. I'll wordsmith that a little.
Perfect.
Okay? And then we'll get that off tomorrow for them. Okay, we'll go on to the next one. The next one is continued review of the zoning amendments and land use regulations. Blair?
So if you want to look at that red line document that it says statutorily mandated zoning ordinance amendments for twenty twenty-six town meeting, town of Nottingham. So at the last meeting, I presented to you all about eight-ish something zoning amendments that the town really does need to, to pass to be compliant with now state regulations. We batted them around for a little bit. You all gave me some feedback. I filled in the gaps where I wasn't sure what you're looking for and just took a stab at some things, but basically what you have before you is my revisions to what we had talked about originally. Happy to go through them with you. I don't want to, you know, spend too much time rehashing a lot of stuff. I know there was people, there's people here tonight that wants, and that's the last one. So I am happy to go over anything, but, you know, I just want to know what, what you are seeing here. Before we do proceed, please understand these ones that are here before you are being paid by a grant. We still have others that you have to do to be statutorily compliant, like our list is very long. You have that list. It's in your binders. It was sent to you a meeting or two ago. You have that full list. It's called, it's SRPC's checklist or something, or toolkit is what it's titled. But you have that. So you'll see all the other ones we need to address. Some are zoning, some are development regulations, subdivision, site plan review, but there will be more to come. But these ones, like I said, are being paid for another grant, so they're being, being done discreetly, like separately to keep my ma- my mind from going crazy, trying to keep everything in different buckets. But yeah, these are, these are those. So as I said, we've talked about these. These are the revisions. The next step would be to finalize them and make them into little individual documents that then go on your town warrant. And then we would do the hearings and stuff down the, down the road, but we wanted to start here. So with that said, I'll, you know, any questions, comments, concerns?
I had a question on the the definitions under dwelling units.
Mm-hmm.
Is the terminology for the dwelling unit two family and multifamily, were those part of that statutorily required?
I would not call them statutorily required. I'd call them in a gray area, to be perfectly honest, but when this group was talking about it, they had said, maybe we get rid of family and refer to it as household. That was what was talked about. And I, this is one of those ones where I filled in a lot of gaps.
I, I'm just looking at the, the terminology under dwelling unit two family. And the version that's crossed out seems to me a lot more clear than the. And the version that's crossed out seems to me a lot more clear than the revised. Definition. You know, a residential building designed for or occupied by two families living independently. You know, maybe we change that to household, I don't know, but, um.
I pulled this definition from a couple, you know, and, and mashed together to come up with this. But basically, it's drawn from a couple of different communities. And it was sort of in line with the other ones that I had put in there, single family being a bit unique and, um, just dwelling unit. But, uh, it, it, it does fall in line with, uh, multifamily. Um, yeah, I mean, we can go for it, it doesn't. I mean, I guess that's, so this is the area where I feel like you're gonna, you could potentially get in some trouble with the, with the, the new RSA. And that you're, you're sort of defining who it's for and not just what it is as far as a use or a structure. Um, you're, you're talking more about who it's, who it's intended for. And that's, I don't know if that's really the point of this, uh, to describe who should be using it. I think it's more about, um, just sort of giving it a, of, you know, basics. Give a person a sense of like what, what we mean when we say a two-family or duplex.
Well, I'm just thinking, you know, just kinda hashing it out here. But, um, if we, because of the fact that we have a definition for dwelling unit and a definition for household. We could simply say, for, for example, under the duplex, um. A residential building containing two dwelling units, period. Or.
Yeah, I mean.
Or a residential building containing two separate dwelling units. You know, just.
Right, keep it simple.
Yeah, you know, it just.
Yeah.
One thing that I've learned from dealing with lawyers is any words that we can get rid of that don't really, you know, add to what we're doing. We should probably get rid of because then it introduces some sort of ambiguities.
Sure, yeah, no, I, I hear you. And, and really in all, in all honesty, definitions are really supposed to just be used to clarify words that don't have common understandings.
Right.
You know.
But that's not how it's applied.
What's that?
That is not how it's applied.
Right. At, in this level, yes. In the courts, it is, that is, they, they work on common understandings. But yes, at this level, I, yeah, okay, I understand that.
So, any dwelling unit is a structure, correct?
I was just about to look that up, structure, building, building, structure.
Yeah.
I was just about to.
First dwelling unit thing doesn't have building in it.
Yeah, I, I, I know, I was just about to see that when he was wordsmithing this and I was like, oh, I forgot to look at structure.
But if it was in there, do we need multifamily and all that kinda stuff?
Well.
I'm not seeing anything real different between them.
Between what?
Uh, multifamily, uh, two-family duplex and a single family.
Just the number.
Except the number of units that are there that I think we already know from a duplex or whatever. I, I, um, I know that there are, um, characteristics in our zoning that apply differently to those categories. But I'm just wondering if we have to have one for each one of those categories.
Well, that's what I was just saying a second ago, I mean, common, common understanding could potentially negate the need for these. But as Dirk was saying.
Yeah.
We think it should operate like that, but in reality, it doesn't tend to. So if you're suggesting having them versus not having them, it seems like there's an argument to have them, but, you know, you guys can bat that around. I just, I make this, I will make this note, the state distinguishes between a single family, a two-family and a multifamily. Multifamily being three plus.
Three plus, correct.
The one place where they do seem to make a deviation is that multifamily workforce housing is five plus. I don't know what that means, three and four families are. But i- i- I have seen that in definitions and I think that's why you have two separate definitions currently. One for multifamily dwelling and one for multifamily dwelling workforce housing. I, you, you need to get away from putting numbers of units in the definition of multifamily. Even if you don't want more than four units in a structure in town, you actually allow it in many other places. You allow up to four, six and eight.
If the state's defining it, there's no sense in us defining.
Yeah, and the state only defines it as three plus. So a multifamily, as far as the state concerned, is a triple-decker and a hundred-unit complex, right? They make no distinction. But you and your, this town in, in its original definitions, you can see it limited it, limited what a multifamily was. But then in the ordinance, you allow up to six units for something and up to eight units for something else. So the ordinance, uh, was fighting with the definitions. So I think more than anything, you do need to get that piece out. But, uh, and then use the, the text, the body of the ordinance to stipulate when four units, six units, eight units, whatever units is allowed.
So state defines dwelling.
Kind of a, um, follow-on to, um. What we were just saying, um. You know, including condominium units. Do we have anything in our zoning, uh, about condominiums? Cuz I don't recall seeing any in there.
I, I don't think there would, I don't think there would be anything, I don't know why there would be.
I'm just curious because.
I don't think I've ever seen anything in there, yeah.
What's, what's the word regarding?
Um, regarding condominium units. And.
I, I did a word search for that earlier cuz I kinda popped that same question into my head.
Yeah.
And I didn't get through the whole thing, but, um, in general, um, it didn't set forth any difference for condominiums or, you know. There's not a difference condominium section that I found yet.
Well, that's kind of what I was looking, cuz I don't recall seeing one in the, uh, in our ordinances either. So it, and again, there's, um, you know, kind of going back to our original conversation. About, um, different methods that we could use to address housing. You know, condominiums is certainly a way that that can be done. Um, you know, being able to grant greater density and things like that. Not really relevant for what we're talking about right this second, but, um, just bringing that back up.
Yeah, I just did the quick research and there's nothing in there. The word condominium is mentioned, but never in its, in an isolated way, it's just sort of like as part of a list or something else.
The ADU does say you.
ADU cannot be a.
That's about the only thing that's explicit to condominium, so it's, I mean, condominium just implies.
It's, it's condominium is common ownership, it's defined by the state, three fifty-six B. And, um, I happen to know that, and, um, RSA. And you, the state doesn't really recognize if you have a, a three-family here and you wanna make it three condos. It's three common owners. So in the past conversions that have done many, many of, uh, we've gone to the town planning board and, you know, it's, they have in their zoning regulations often. It says, um, thou shall not create a condominium without talking to us. And then the state regs say thou shalt not regulate condominium because it's a simple form of ownership. So that three-family is the same three-family with three separate owners, period.
Illegal entity.
It's just an ownership issue only. It's all condominium comes out.
Mostly for financing purposes.
But what we don't have in here, which we could have someday, if there is a condominium association, is that the condominium association. You know, gets reviewed by town legal counsel and to make sure it meets the state, um, standards. And that's what's typically happened if I bought a duplex, converted it to a condo. They don't approve it, but they do look at the condo docs to say this is meet state statutory requirements. And that, that's, that's the extent of the approval. And we don't have anything that says that we have legal review of that or it should be state.
Unless they're building a new one and in which case it's falls under site plan review.
And I didn't get a chance to look into that to see if that adds that verbiage in there. And we have very few condos in towns to kind of bounce that back to what, we do have some. And we'll probably have more.
Probably.
All right, do you wanna look at the next ones? ADUs or we?
Yeah, so.
Edits?
All right, uh, yeah, how, I mean.
Let me, let me just jump in, Nick, you don't have to write every word, you know that, right?
I do know.
Okay, good.
Just, I'll have to write it up, so I like to.
I just wanna make sure you're not taking every word.
Are you doing minutes now?
I, cuz we're not live right now.
Not sure if we're recording anymore, so just as a backup.
So just like the lawyer said, you can take words out.
Typically not doing this.
Before we move on, the definitions seem sort of simple to me. Dwelling unit, it's not a building, right? It's, it's a sub-space sometimes.
It can be, yeah.
Right, right.
An ADU is a type of dwelling unit.
Exactly.
Yep, a condo is.
A condo is a delit.
And has shared.
Right, an apartment is a dwelling unit.
Yep.
I think it's good to have the condominium in the dwelling unit part. And that we differentiate that on the accessory dwelling that it, it can't be condoed cuz it's not a freestanding legal dwelling unit.
I thought we weren't gonna include condominium, we don't have it anywhere else.
No, for the ADU.
Yeah, but that's in the regulatory part, we're talking about the definitions.
Right, so that, right, the single-family one does not make sense to me. Because. It says a building containing one dwelling unit that is not attached to any other dwelling by any means, including but not limited to blah, blah, blah.
Which specifically takes accessory dwelling units out.
Okay, so that's what takes it out, so.
I'm, well, okay, so.
But so that, because it's taking it out, it's, you know, it's confusing because it's exclusion. Excluding it by some RSA as opposed to just saying, hey. A dwelling shall mean any building, structure, trailer, mobile home or camp or part thereof. Used and occupied for human habitation or intended to be so used and includes any.
There's an ADU still a single-family home if you have an ADU attached to it.
Yeah, you still have a single-family home with an ADU attached to it.
But it has two units.
Right.
It's got two dwelling units.
So it's not a single-family home at that point.
It's, or it's not a, right, it's not a single.
I, I think there's some things here cuz the residential, ADU is a residentially living unit within a single or attached to a single-family dwelling.
When you're a house shop, when you get a single-family home with an ADU.
But it says a building containing one dwelling unit.
Right, I think there is some, I, I think the single-family is not correct.
Yeah.
Because I don't think it is one dwelling unit.
Right, cuz it could be two.
Cuz there could be two.
Right.
A single family?
Yeah, if you have an ADU attached to it.
You have an ADU to, what, what does a single-family become if there's an ADU attached to it? A duplex? No?
No.
But I think it's still, I think it's, I think it's a single-family unit with an accessory dwelling.
It's a single family.
It's a single-family unit. But it says in the single-family unit that it can't be attached to anything.
Because it's called dwelling unit, a single family. As opposed to being a, a single-family structure. Or building, a single-family building could have two dwelling units, one being the primary and one being accessory.
So let's get rid of, uh, a building containing one dwelling unit and then strike out that is not attached to any other dwelling unit by any means. Because it does include manufactured home or manufactured homes as defined by RSA and pre-site built homes as a.
So, but you know what happens if you have a single-family home with an attached ADU? Right. Then now you have a building containing two dwelling units?
I think that the definition of, um. A dwelling unit. Common two-family could potentially be teased out a little bit. But, um, I'd be hesitant to start calling a single-family and an ADU a two-family.
Well, look at your definition for dwelling unit, single-family, it says a building containing one dwelling unit. And so how can a single-family home with an ADU be considered? A single-family dwelling unit by that definition cuz it says a building containing one dwelling unit. But with an attached ADU, it would have two dwelling units, which now makes it a two-family duplex, at least according to how it's written here.
Yeah.
So we just need to figure out how to fix that. I don't have an answer for that yet, but.
I'm just asking, is an ADU? Sorry, it's an accessory dwelling unit, but it's just like a special kind of dwelling unit that doesn't follow the same rules. And so it's just, it's kinda like.
It's a residential living unit.
Right.
It can't be bigger than.
You have a condoed unit, can each condo have its own ADU if they're separate owners?
Yeah, because it, the definite, the, 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 the whole section of ADU is quite clear that it's, it's accessory to a single-family unit. Single families, yeah, single-family dwelling.
It should still be a single-family.
Dwelling unit?
But a condo wouldn't be considered a single-family dwelling unit.
Right, but it is very specific to only being for single families.
Yes.
Yeah, it doesn't change it to multifamily then, when you add an ADU, it's no longer, it's not a two-family at that point.
I know, but I, what they're saying is that the way the definition is written, because it's implying a single structure. With nothing else around it but trees and yard.
So what if we just changed the definition of the single-family dwelling unit to say it's a building containing one dwelling unit? With, with potentially an ADU or something like that, so that it took one accessory dwelling unit?
If I can, um, so city of Rochester for their single-family dwelling. It says a detached dwelling unit or a detached dwelling which contains exactly one residential unit. Except for accessory apartments where permitted and is not attached to any other dwelling or residential unit. And occupies its own individual lot on which there is no other dwelling or principal use.
That's a lot clearer.
Yes, but that, the tail end of that negates a single-family with an ADU cuz it says only one unit on that lot.
Except for accessory apartments, which we changed the language to that to except for.
Accessory dwelling.
And a single accessory dwelling unit.
The problem here, I think, is everything's using dwelling unit. What I heard from Rochester was it was a residential unit. And.
And a dwelling.
Dwelling, yeah.
Right.
And so as long as you continue to use dwelling unit, everything's gonna be messed up. Because a, a dwelling unit.
So. Sorry, go ahead, go ahead.
Well, I, I don't know where I'm going, I'm just, the dwelling unit singly, single-family to me doesn't make any sense if you have an ADU. Because it's gonna be two-family, but not a duplex. Although I don't, not sure I know the difference between those two.
Rochester separates dwelling from dwelling unit.
Oh, correct.
Dwelling is a building containing one or more residential units. And then a dwelling unit is one or more rooms designed, occupied or intended for occupancy as separate living quarters. With cooking, sleeping and sanitary facilities provided within the dwelling unit for the exclusive use of a single-family maintaining a household.
I don't like the end of it.
Yeah, that end part really.
Well, I mean, you know.
I think we need to stay away from family.
Right.
Yeah, but you could say.
Single household or whatever.
Yeah, one or more rooms designed, occupied or intended for occupancy as separate living quarters, et cetera, et cetera. For the exclusive use of a single household.
That, that's literally what the proposed dwelling unit.
I like that better than.
You know.
Definition is, I think.
Pronouns or whatever else we have to add in there.
But I, uh, I mean, we're gonna have to go through that though, there's gonna be a lot of definitions that we may not have defined.
Right.
To, to, you know, we're gonna have to abandon a lot of what we have and rewrite a lot of this. I feel like there's, I feel like we have the foundation of something here in ours that we don't have to modify that much.
I feel like we just need to modify that single-family dwelling unit to specify that it could have an ADU. And that will kind of fix everything.
Oh, that's what I was thinking of.
You know, that seems like the main sticking point is that.
With the exception of an eight, possible ADU.
Yeah.
Right. Yep.
Exception to possibly.
What, what we could say is that at the end of a single-family dwelling is that. If it, if it includes an ADU, it's not a two-family.
Includes an ADU?
Well, at the end of, at the end of single-family dwelling unit, you could say, if it includes an ADU, it's not a two-family.
A single-family with an ADU shall not be considered a two-family.
Yes, something to that effect.
Or a two-dwelling unit, we can't say family. So I think the intent here is that the state passed a thing, a law that said, "You can't dictate how many people live in a household." And, um, which, which was partly, I think, came from schools that, you know, near Durham or something where they're renting out a house to six kids and that the neighbors complained and they started saying how many people could live in a house, and then people started saying, "Well, wait a minute, I have my, my family living with me and my, my in-laws or whoever," and, you know, it's, it started talking about whether they're family or not family, and they said, "You can't regulate it, so we're trying to take the word 'family' out of this." And just to say occupants or whatever it is, we can't limit household to family occupants, we can't discriminate, et cetera. I, I think we just, I think we need more than anything to get the word "family" out of there. My impression.
I mean, we could just change "single-family" to "single-household."
I think "unit" is, wait, do what?
Units, "unit" is the problem. The word "unit" is the problem.
"Unit" is a problem?
Yes, because it's overused.
Okay, I thought, I thought fa- "single-family" was a problem here.
That's what I thought too.
No, it's "unit."
Just say dwelling, can you say just dwelling without using the word "unit"?
Well, yes, one dwelling.
Cuz then, you know.
The dwelling is.
Then we'll have to define dwelling as well, but.
Well, dwellings, well, yeah, because of the unit.
I mean, you know, a dwelling is a residential building.
Right, or just buildings.
Say building, you don't have, I mean.
Well, no, if it, if it's a dwelling, it is specifically a building for residential use.
Housing.
Yeah.
Housing, yeah.
Getting all that?
Oh, yeah. Word for word.
We want minutes, not hours.
Alright, well, we know we need to revise this a little bit, so let's, let's take a break on that. And Larry, you've heard some of the concerns here or the, uh, input.
Solution.
Maybe, well, I know, we're, we're not coming to a solution yet either, so.
Maybe we found, maybe we can come back to it.
Yes, not tonight, but let's.
Not leaving till we get this done.
Dirk is done.
Can I ask one more question?
Potentially.
This has to do with two.
Potentially.
Alright. How does the two-family duplex work into the ADU world? Is it outlawed?
It's not allowed.
It's not allowed.
Not allowed, okay.
Because we say that you cannot turn it into condominiums.
Well, I'm, I'm asking, is it the state that says it's not allowed, or is it?
Well, we're saying that an ADU has to be a part of a single-family.
Single family.
Yeah.
Only, or, or it's single, whatever that is.
Dwelling. But then we go a step further and see you can't condoize it, because that would mean that the owner could sell off that unit and, and that person would have their own independent thing, they would just be on a common lot with the other unit. By saying in the regulation for ADUs that you cannot make it a condominium, that means that the ADU and the single-family have to stay under common ownership.
Okay.
Because it's intended to be a rental. The ADU is intended to be a rental, so it's always gonna be a rental, it's always gonna be.
I, I thought they were meant for, you know, when they first came out, it was meant for in-laws and families and stuff like that. They were always meant to be rentals, you're saying?
Maybe back in the day when this thing got first passed, ADUs at the state level 10 years ago, they said, "Sure, if you wanna limit it to familiar people, yes, but that's no longer the case, these are not in-law granny flats, you know, all pairs." This is an independent living unit that is allowed to be rented. It's just that you have to have common ownership and that person that owns it has to be in one of the two units. So that those, for those two reasons, it's completely different than a duplex or a two-family.
House Bill 457, um, prohibits adoption and enforcement of any zoning ordinance that restricts the number of occupants of a dwelling unit, they use dwelling unit, to fewer than two occupants per bedroom. The bill prohibits the adoption and enforcement of any zoning ordinance that discriminates based on familial, non-familial, if I'm saying that right, and marital status. So I think, again, we're, we've got family things in here and we need to take family out of there. Is what I'm kinda thinking.
So we can still restrict residents to no more than two per bedroom?
You cannot.
Right, no, so.
You can't restrict it to less than two.
No, you cannot.
To less than two. Right, so we have, we can have.
Prohibits the adoption of any zoning ordinance that can restrict the number of occupants to two per bedroom.
To fewer than two.
Fewer than two. So, if you had three kids, you could put them in that bedroom, if you had three, whoever.
Well, we could restrict it.
But that's not the issue on the table.
Right, no, no, I know.
We're just trying to define this stuff.
I'm just, sorry.
Alright, let's, let's, let's move off of this title, because we're not going anywhere, alright? Let's, let's get on to whatever the next section is.
Alright. So scrolling down, it's, um.
Did we agree on the ZBA appeals deadlines, the, the first one on the thing?
Uh, that, I mean, no, we didn't talk about it, but the really isn't.
Okay, I, I, I thought the formatting and everything looks like what we asked for, so.
Yeah, I just tacked it on at the bottom to, to avoid changing of numbers, but basically, it just, it just says 30 days. I, I don't think your community even said anything, I've seen other communities that say, "Within reason." So, yeah, this just, I think this meets, it wasn't fine.
Alright, I thought, I thought it was good.
Okay, thank you. So, now we're into ADUs.
One down.
Success! Yeah. Alright, so, one of the things to keep in mind is that, two things to keep in mind is that statements like "has to make it look like a single-family", the RSA now doesn't allow you to do that. They also don't, won't let you put any more restrictions on the approval or the development of an ADU that a, um, single-family is subject to. So, at the, at the end, you know, the standard of review is, I just crossed it off because I, I felt like it was putting it under, under greater scrutiny than a single-family. The ones above that, I thought were meeting, um, um, what you guys had talked about. Nine, it can be a manufactured home. Ten, uh, the interior door again, can't put a restriction on it. And then eleven, I just put that in to, to clarify in case in the future you add new single, uh, new zoning districts that allow single-family, this is, just makes it clear that we are going to stay compliant because our ADU section says, anywhere that there's a single-family unit, dwelling unit allowed, ADUs are allowed on that lot. Maybe I can clarify that.
Just one thing, um, under the standards for review, number one, the property in proposed use must conform to the dimensional requirements of a single-family residential lot. I don't think that that should be crossed out, because, um, clarifying that. Basically, if, if we take something like that out, I could see somebody coming forward with, for example, a non-conforming lot that they have a house on, and they're like, "Well, you know what, we should be able to build an ADU wherever we want on the lot with no regards to setbacks or anything like that, because we have a right to do it."
Well, in a sense, they do. They have the right for the use, what I don't know, even though it's a substandard lot, that doesn't meet, you know, dimensional requirements for a single-family. They have a single-family on it, so the single-family use is established, ergo, they allowed the ADU as a use. Now, can they actually build it on there and meet setbacks and stuff? And, and, and are they held to current setback standards? I don't know the answer to that, off the top of my head.
That's why I think that that should.
I think it should be, I think it should be crossed off, but I think it should be worded differently. Like, I feel like it just, just, like, we should add a 12 or something like that. Because I think that that statement doesn't, I don't think that statement holds true, I, I, based on the way I understand the regulation now. Like, if it's a new development, if it's a new, if it's a blank slate, and they come in and say, "I'm gonna build a single-family house and an ADU," well, they have to meet single-family residential requirements, dimensional requirements of two acres, 200 feet, 30, 30K, yada, yada, yada. So, I would say that that statement is implied by the fact that they have to meet the single-family to get the single-family in order to get the accessory use.
So, kind of what I'm looking at, um, the reason, you know, behind thinking that we should keep something like that in there is if we have, for example, you know, a existing conforming lot, 200 feet of frontage, two acres, you know, the whole nine yards, but for whatever reason, they can't meet the 30,000 square feet, for example, to put an ADU on there, that they have the right to put on there. Do you see what I'm saying?
Yeah, but some, just because someone has a right to do something, doesn't mean they can that, that they're not prohibited from doing it because of some other reason. So, if they have, if they can't meet it with, uh, you know, with a new development, I, I think that I think you have a right to prohibit them from putting an ADU on there, but if somebody up at the lake on a three-quarter acre lot wants to do an ADU, but can do it without making the property more non-conforming, I, I don't think you can prohibit that.
Yeah.
So let me mention on House Bill, whatever this is here.
457.
Thank you, sir, um, item XI11, if you're Roman, if you're not Roman. They shall, the municipality shall allow accessory dwelling units to be converted from existing structures, including but not limited to detached garages, regardless of whether such structures violate current dimensional requirements or setbacks or lot coverage.
That's converting existing buildings, that's not building a new one.
Building new.
Because there are some communities that have different setbacks for primary and accessory structures. So we have a 50-foot setback for everything.
Okay.
But some communities say you can put a shed up to 10 feet on a property line or a garage.
Or if it's existing, especially in a non-conforming lot.
Right.
Exactly. Ergo, my house, where I have a shed, that's like less than five feet from the property line, and.
That could be an accessory dwelling unit, sir.
That'd be a new source of rental income for you.
Maybe. I was thinking about tearing it down, but no. Sure it's not over the property line?
I'm sure.
So there, there is still underlying this whole thing, a requirement that the sewage capacity needs to be, meet the requirements, and a septic system for an ADU will add on, um, it's like a bedroom and a half, 225 gallons per day. So that is still a requirement in here that it has to meet those requirements. So even if it was a half-acre lot with a shed, or whatever, as long as you could get a septic on there.
How many, how many does it equal?
One and a half bedrooms.
It equals one and a half?
Yeah.
And I think all you have to do is demonstrate that you can get it, you don't actually have to put it in.
Yeah, it's, that's, that's number seven of our requirements. The replacement or proposed septic system must be designed and, and certified by a licensed septic designer as adequate, but it doesn't say anything about being, you know, installed, just that you have to have a signed plan.
Yeah, and that's, that's typical, um, language for the state because of the fact that they recognize that, you know, you have to be able to show that you can do it.
Right.
They're not gonna force you to, uh, go ahead and put it in unless it fails.
So it sounds like we've already got that covered in our existing regulations, right?
Yep.
I think so. So the, the question was on the dimensional requirements for the single-family, so would, if, Glenn, if you see that there's a glitch of some kind, like somebody's creating a new property, a single, I see another thing I wanna bring up in a second. If you see, you know, they're trying to subdivide or they're trying to divide a lot and add an ADU, what, what's?
So, it's more that, um, I'm thinking about, um, for example, uh, you know, non-conforming lots where, you know, like all of the lake lots where they're very small, they have limited size, but there are quite a lot of non-conforming buildings already on them.
Yep.
And where they've got these rules, um, I just worry about people, you know, tearing down a crummy old garage and putting up an ADU on a building, on a property that can't properly support it.
They're not gonna get the septic.
They're not gonna get the septic.
I understand, I'm just.
Would be the glitch there for them.
I'm.
Doesn't mean they won't build it.
I'm working on one right now.
It's beyond our, that worry.
That's a compliance, right?
It's, the, the property is incredibly steep, they're gonna have to bring in, you know, literally hundreds of yards of fill to build what they want. And, you know, the, according to them, the septic is no problem, they're just going to bring in more fill, and it's like, you know. Yeah, I know, it's ridiculous, but if there aren't explicit rules against things, people will try and do everything possible to, uh, you know, get around them.
So in, in addition to this, I got to believe that there's increased traffic. And now we're talking camps, camp roads, and all that kinda stuff. There's gotta be increased traffic as a result. And if I'm understanding it correctly, a single-family dwelling lot, lot of words, um, can have an attached and an unattached ADU, correct?
Can't have an attached.
Only one.
One.
One or the other, yeah.
One or the other.
One or the other.
Alright, but anyway, it's increased traffic.
Yes.
That's gonna be difficult, I think. Can't regulate that, it's just something we're gonna have to, I guess, deal with. My question and, and concern is, is somewhat related to the I got an ADU on a three-acre lot, after 20 years of having an ADU being rented and, and it's a dwelling unit by design, that at some point in time that gets subdivided off. Whether it has, whether it meets requirements or not, it's been a single-dwelling unit for a while. I, I sent that to Blair, and Blair had some good comments associated with it. But I, I just, it concerns me that some of these things become something more than what it was originally intended to be. And.
Most of the lake lot camps?
And when you talk about it being a rental unit, I don't see that written out here anywhere. Because if it was always a rental unit, it couldn't be sub, it, it has to stay as a, no, that's not true.
Right, it has to stay as a rental, or whatever, has to stay as an ADU, it can't be converted to a condo.
It's gotta be under the common ownership.
Right. But you could still subdivide and still be under the same ownership.
If, if that, if the two lots are.
Subdivisible.
Subdivitable.
But, so you would have to meet those minimums or whatever.
So you basically have.
But all you have to do is have a good viewpoint to the zoning board, and.
Right.
They're gonna say yes, especially if it's been used that way for 50 years.
And then, you have another ADU attached to each one of those.
Right, there you go.
Exactly.
I mean. I'm sorry, I've seen it here in town, it's crazy.
It happens, I'm sure it happens. But you hope those are real, I mean, they have to be the exceptions.
Everybody's rules got somebody's name on it.
Right.
Yeah, we, yeah, we can't regulate for every single case.
My point is the state ought to stay out of it. They're trying to, they're trying to beat the housing crunch that.
So I'd like to bring up one point on this too, is that your, Blair, your edits are just for compliance. If we have items in here that might wanna deviate from what we exist and have, but still meet regulations, state regulations, you haven't touched them. For the most.
For the most part, yes. I feel like that's a fair statement for these ones that are in front of you right now.
That's a long way of coming to number five, which is the gross living area of an ADU shall not exceed 750. The state has moved it to 950.
Yes.
We have it at a more restrictive.
The most restrictive you can make it, right?
The most restrictive, it can't be any smaller than that. Do we wanna change that?
Yes.
I think we should change it to the maximum. I think we should too. If it's allowed by right, might as well maximize the amount of space somebody's able to get out of it. Include that to 950.
Yep.
That's my feeling.
Shall not exceed 950.
And the verbiage in here is unless otherwise authorized by the municipality, so we're authorizing that, so.
Northwood's is a thousand.
I thought 950 was the state max.
It says, shall not exceed 950 square feet unless otherwise authorized. So yes, you could go beyond 950.
No, you cannot.
No, you cannot, 950 is the max, you can't be restricted less than 750.
Total living space of the accessory dwelling unit shall not exceed 950 unless otherwise authorized by the municipality. So we could.
So that's weird. That's, that, whoever wrote that law.
Yeah, that's a weird way to write it.
Was not thinking about it.
Yeah, shocker.
My point exactly. My point exactly.
We're fine with 950?
950.
Sure.
Aye.
I was gonna suggest we just go with the state maximum, just say that, but the way that's written is like terrible.
What did you say? Read it again.
The total living space of an accessory dwelling unit shall not exceed 950 square feet unless otherwise authorized by the municipality.
Which means we could overrule that as a town.
Which is what Northwood did apparently.
So it's, it's just weird that they put a cap on it for the state. Well, I guess it means, so since it's allowed by right, if the, if the town doesn't have an ordinance about it at all, about an ADU, you can build a 950.
Maybe.
Cause the state says 950 is the max, but unless the town explicitly permits, bigger than that. That's your by right maximum.
Yeah.
That's how.
You know, I'm just thinking about that. But the state did say though, is you cannot go less than 750. Right.
That's correct.
That was the backdoor restriction people used ages ago. You know, they would cap it at 250 square feet or something.
So then we would, we would just match that and say not exceed 750 and.
950.
950 and can't be less than 750 square feet.
Well, I don't, I don't think we say anything, I think we stay silent. If, if somebody wants to do a 400 square foot ADU, they can do that. This is just saying the town.
Can't limit.
Yeah, the town can't say.
Move on.
Just one, I don't know how in stone your proposed formatting is, but I do, with these types of regulations, I do prefer it where a numbered item gets repealed or, you know, instead of crossed out, so that it's, the numbering's retained going forward, so instead of crossing things out, keeping the number but saying repealed, and then adding the new ones onto the end, just so you don't have different versions of the zoning that have different numbers on them. Do you see what I'm saying?
And, and put, you know, repealed per RSA, whatever.
We had that discussion.
I mean, if you take that as section maybe, but.
So like part H, the standard for review, that whole thing could say, you know, it could say is part H, but say repealed. It's just for consistency of numbering, you know, throughout the document as those things change. And it's not a hill I'm gonna die on, I just, I prefer it, but if it makes things too messy.
For example, if that was section G, and we took out the whole section G, then what happens to H is what I think I hear you saying.
Well, yeah, I mean, at the bottom of this, you can see a lot of the numbers are strike, struck out and changing around and all that, and just.
Yeah, we talked about that last meeting. And it's the links.
I don't know where we landed.
Didn't land.
Yeah, I don't think.
And I don't think I'm repressing the issue.
I just think you're gonna walk into a lot, a lot of blank space, a lot of unnecessary space, but if you wanted, I think I've seen people do it for, like back when they had, everything was an article, right? They would repeal whole articles and that would do it, but a change within, I haven't seen too many times for that, you know, getting down to this minutia, this is like five, you know, indentations from the original heading.
I think the only benefit is just tracking from, for purposes of what's changed. And we do have documented every zoning ordinance that has been amended. Yes, it'd be a pain in the butt to go back and find out what was missing. But we already, you know, you can go back and say, okay, this was the regulation back in so-and-so. How often do we need to do that? Well, we have to look at it, if somebody comes in for a non-conformance, we have to check back and some of those times, but it's very infrequent. I just think it is more work, cause we haven't done it in the past. Well, we have, we found a couple of places where it says just deleted. So we're inconsistent. And I think unless we draw the line at this amendment forward, we could change it. But then we're setting that precedence for always doing that continuum.
We did it for signs, that's what we found last time, like on page six, under.
Yeah, it just says deleted.
D2, it says deleted and voted 314, 2006. But that wasn't continued, the same throughout.
So that's what I'm saying, I don't think that if we did it this year, that in three or four years, that they would do that if we're not on the board.
The, the nice part of doing that is you don't have to change any links. You don't have to figure out where D2C is referenced anywhere in the, in the document.
Right.
That, that's the saving grace to this, I'm not saying, again, I'm not dying on that hill, but.
Yeah, cause if we, if we just replace an H and it's now something else and somewhere else says because of 2H.
Yep.
And H is gone.
The H is gone and it says something else.
And if anybody misses that at any point during the process, now we've got a missing.
I and J further on that, that now get renumbered, then it becomes a nonsensical statement to what it referenced.
I, I think referencing back to something else is just a convenience of the reader. I think not doing it doesn't negate stuff, like it doesn't, oh, because you didn't reference me back to the parking regulation, I don't have to provide parking or something. I think doing, I personally don't like references to any state regulation, any state office, or even within the document because of the very reason that you're, you're all talking about. I remember we were talking about last time was, can we just get rid of the whole ADU section and just say, see the state regs? You know, that was, it was a little tongue-in-cheek, but I think that was some part of the conversation, so.
I thought it was a good idea.
Yeah, I do, I agree.
When you read the state regs, which. It says, well, or as determined by the town, so there's a couple.
Yeah, there's a custom.
A couple of places we have to do.
Yeah, there's some customizable.
They're making us do it. So my only, two questions here on this topic, same topic here, is that when it goes to the warrant article, does it have to say delete section H and replace with such and such?
No, I'm doing it the way it should appear in your warrant.
Okay.
However, because this is the way the state does it, if you look at state RSAs, they bold new wording, new words, they strike out, they underline new additions, they strike out stuff that's being removed. If you wanna do this, you know, show the deleted repealed sections, then that would just be something that has to be added in and would be part of the, part of the warrant article.
The town has to vote on this, we don't vote on this, the town votes on these changes.
We vote on bringing it forward.
In the verbiage and setting up the hearing.
There's a process, but ultimately, it's the voters who decide.
So we'll confuse them too.
Yeah.
So here's, here's a glitchy question, all right, so we have a commercial district which used to allow multi, uh, single families and there's a crap down to single families up in the commercial district. This says that the ADU shall be allowed in all residential districts. And ADUs are not commercial, uh, single families are not allowed in commercial now, so can someone in a commercial district get an ADU on their existing single-family home?
Yes.
How do we deal with that?
I don't know that we need to deal with it.
We don't need to deal with it, it's, it goes through its normal process of getting an ADU.
Yeah, which is a building permit.
It was approved as a single-family.
Right.
It's a single-family. They're allowed to have an ADU. Now, a new building wouldn't be able to.
Cause a new building wouldn't be allowed, a new single family wouldn't be allowed. A new single family wouldn't be allowed.
Well, a multifamily could be.
Right.
But then a multifamily can't.
But a multifamily can't have an ADU.
Right.
Right. But a multifamily, that's what the state's changing, right, is the multifamily can be done in a.
Allowed by right in a commercial. Commercial industrial zone, right?
Yep.
But we just don't have any, we have one.
ADU as a matter of right in all zoning districts where single-family homes are permitted. It doesn't address the commercial, so.
Yeah, I, I see what you're saying, I'm putting a note down. I feel like anybody would win that on appeal, so I feel like there's an, it's implied, but maybe it can be clarified with a little bit of text.
Maybe we add language, if the single family is existing prior to this, then.
Less is more. Yeah, I, it's either that or I delete some language.
Under.
Yes, I can find a way to clarify that.
Under our ADU rules, I'm sorry, I'm trying not to interrupt. Under our ADU requirements, it says only one ADU shall be allowed per principal single-family dwelling unit and/or lot. So, you know, if we have anything where there is a single-family unit or a single-family dwelling unit, you know, they can have an ADU. Though, that does get down to another one. Old number 11, new number nine. No ADU or structure shall be converted to a condominium. I think that taking out the or structure because we shouldn't, you know, no ADU is going to be allowed in any structure that is not a single-family dwelling.
No, cause you could have it in the garage, right?
Right, but it's still defined.
But it's still.
It's part of the ADU definition.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, I, I feel like the, the word is redundant, I don't see it boxing the town into a corner though, in any way. I, I looked at that one, do you feel like there's a scenario where someone could come in and use that as a loophole, you said or structure?
They build an ADU in their barn and they subdivide the barn.
Cause I can, I can write regulations, I just don't see a scenario where that, where those words or structure come back to haunt the town.
I don't think we need structure in there, I, I agree with Glenn, or structure.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I'll just take it.
Yeah.
All right, we all suck?
I get a cross up.
The night is young.
Would you like me to make a motion to adjourn?
Four, five minutes passed.
We found our loophole.
If we can't do it in two hours, you should get pushed to another meeting.
Well.
Or we need to be more efficient with our two hours.
Could be a little column A, little column B.
Well, it's a very confusing subject.
It's a single-family lot.
I'm sorry.
I don't know.
No, you can't, it has to be accessory to something else. But yes, I saw a tool, like, again, like or structure, it's redundant but irrelevant. You know, in my opinion.
All right, any more discussion on ADUs at the moment?
Which number is it?
Number three.
New nine, or, oh, sorry, talking about something else?
What more do you wanna talk about?
None of it.
You wanna go to 631?
I wanna go to, yeah.
Night, night.
All right, so home-based childcare facilities, this is gonna be allowed as of, you know, by right, without site plan review, if it's home-based. So if someone's doing it in their house, then it'll be a. We have major and minor home-based occupations or whatever we call them, the major ones require site plan review. We can't require that of a daycare facility, so that's what this is saying. If you agree with what I've written.
Oh, whether we agree or not, the state said that.
The state's making us agree.
I did try to pull it directly from the RSA to leave out ambiguity. All right, and then you don't have minimal onsite parking. There are a couple more things that'll have to do with private roads and building on class six roads. I gotta talk to Dale about this, cause I'm, I'm just having a hard time understanding these things. And then the last one is vesting, uh, we talked about this last time a little bit, remember, uh, active and, active and substantial completion and then is it active and substantial development and then substantial completion? And then the, the rights that you get, the vesting that, that happens at certain timeframes. So those three I'm still working on, I've gotta talk with Dale to help me understand a little bit better.
Did, did we like the 631? Dissertation adding multifamily dwelling onto permitted use in commercial?
Right, so.
We like that, right?
Yeah, we have to.
We have to.
You have.
I, I know, but that's the right change by adding that?
So, I, this is the most bare minimum to make it compliant, is, is to add it as a use. I think that you have some rights to put, like the same way you have limitation, the way you have, let me get to your zoning. The way you have restrictions or performance standards, we'll call it, for how you do multifamily in the town of Nottingham, right? Like you, you have some performance standards. It's, it's still two acres per unit, but you have some setback stuff, I'm trying to find it as I'm talking, so I could read it to you, but. Not to exceed six units per building.
Prefer to our multifamily.
Uh, yeah, I, yeah, I could do that. Yeah, maybe that's what I'll do, it's just, where is that?
You can just say multifamily dwelling meeting section so-and-so.
As long as that section reference stays the same.
Just leave it the way it is.
As soon as we can lock it up someplace.
So I might just, I might, I might forego my own, my own desires and just, yeah, reference them.
But in regards to this section, not in regards to HB 631, isn't this where Nottingham Industries wanted something put on here that was?
Yeah, warehousing wasn't included in the list of acceptable uses, which seemed kinda strange for a commercial.
Should we add warehousing on this?
We can.
Again, I was trying to do stuff that was as minimal.
No, no, I understand.
Okay, okay, cool.
This seems relatively simple, we can make success here.
As long as it doesn't say water.
Water bottling.
You could probably do a lot of.
Water, water bottling and exporting.
Yeah, that's pretty thin on uses, huh?
We should, we should come up with, do you have, like, can you get a list of uses from other towns, like, that get all the common ones in here, just so we don't have to think about it?
Yeah, I agree with you.
Why reinvent the wheel?
Yeah, somebody's definitely already done that before.
I feel like just warehousing just got overlooked, because.
Yeah, it seems like a very obvious.
There are few businesses that wouldn't fit into service facility, retail wholesale. There are, there are few businesses that wouldn't fit into service facility, retail, wholesale, professional office. I mean, God, I feel like that captures just about everything out there.
Almost everything, except for warehousing.
Manufacturing.
Yep.
Yeah, ware, warehousing, manufacturing, right. So maybe that's what we need. Manufacturing and warehousing.
And two?
Well. I'd add it as one.
They didn't, they didn't split out theater and cultural center.
Right.
Right, they made sure they got both of those in.
Is it a restaurant, retail or wholesale?
Restaurant is a service facility, including eating and lodging.
Oh, thank you. Okay.
But I presume service facility would also include, like, like a, like a.
A plumber.
A plumber that has an officer or I was thinking like someone that provides.
Welding place.
Like someone that provides a service.
The welding place.
Like a.
It's a service facility.
A dry cleaner.
But they could also be.
It's not retail. You know, you go and drop your stuff off and you come back and get it, right? Like, so they're doing stuff. So I feel like service facility covers a lot of things, things that where you're not.
Like dog grooming or something.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. Something like that. So what do we say? Warehousing and.
Include adult novelty?
Manufacturing.
Service. That's a, that's a retail wholesale establishment.
What are we saying? Were we joking about with that?
Adult novelty shelves. You're going to open one or four?
Theater and cultural center.
Well, that's for the, that's part of it.
What are the laws here around that?
In our town?
No, in, in the state. Like in Mass, you have to have a zoning district that allows it. Otherwise they can go anywhere, retail, service are allowed.
Live free or die.
No, New Hampshire's not allowed.
Not even at all?
Not live free or die.
I mean, because we got.
You can probably have adult books and stuff.
We restricted them. We got sued under First Amendment rights. We had to allow it.
They're, yeah, so they're allowed in a number of different towns. It's just that they have some pretty severe restrictions on.
Of course.
But, yeah, I don't know about Nottingham. I haven't looked for that one yet, but.
Northwood has just about every category identified in their, in their definitions. I, I didn't read it to see what differentiated something, anything adult or whatever it was. Just.
I know, I know that Rochester and Milton both have specific ordinances against adult establishment.
That's because the donut shop's right across the river.
So this has concluded all of our other business on the agenda? I think we're through that. Is there new business?
That's not, that's not on the.
Proceeded caution.
So the next thing on the agenda is the adjournment.
I would like to make a motion that we adjourn.
I'll second.
Motion is second. Those in favor, indicate aye.
Aye.
Skip, you can't say no. Skip can't vote. We're adjourned.